We might as well stick with that three. Now you're speaking all of us in.
Mayor.
The regular council meeting, November the 7th, 2012, will now be called to order. And I'll ask the city clerk to do the roll call, please.
Mr. Michael?
Here.
Mr. Jen? Mr. Paloma? Mr. Gearing?
Here.
Mayor Feig?
Here. Could we stand now and pledge allegiance to the flag?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
I'd like to start off by congratulating all the politicians who made the office and sympathize with the ones that didn't. I know that the agony of defeat is not a good one. But I want to congratulate everyone and it's democracy at its best. So now we will hear from the guests.
I'd like to welcome everyone. Thanks for coming. I think I've been here three years and I think it's our largest crowd right there.
It should be like this every month.
Please don't hesitate to come back.
Christine and Mike Schock. Would you like to speak? You can come over to the podium.
It's like you're going with her.
Hi, my name is Christine Schock. And we moved into our house on, it's 72 Oakland Avenue in Uniontown about five years ago. And we've just seen a progression of people's cars being damaged, pets being hit, people afraid to let their kids even walk up the sidewalk to the bus stop because cars are driving in excess of 50 miles per hour to 80 miles per hour in a residential neighborhood where the speed limit is posted at 25. In addition to that, there were some stop signs that were put in a few years back. However, those are just disregarded. I mean, people just blow through the stop signs. And, you know, we have kids, we have houses. I mean, I had emailed Mayor Feig and also Rhett Mahoney just with some pictures of our neighbor's car that got smashed into eight o'clock in the morning on a Saturday morning because somebody was driving a ridiculous speed. Their car is sitting in front of their house and it gets wrecked into. A cat gets ran over. I know another neighbor's dog got hit. When is it going to stop? Is it going to be a child? Is it going to be an elderly person that is trying to unload their groceries because they're parked along the street? I mean, where's it going to end? Is it going to be when somebody actually dies? Because people just continuously want to speed on our street. It's used as a cut through from Pittsburgh Street over to Route 40. We're just fed up with it. We are fed up with people driving through our neighborhood like it's a freeway. So when I contacted the mayor and Rhett Mahoney, I went around and I had several people sign a petition. And I did, I did show pictures, like when I sent the emails to Rhett Mahoney and Mayor Feig, just of the damage to the neighbor's car. And this isn't the first time this has happened. My husband's truck mirror has been ripped off twice. You know, there have been other accidents on the streets. So this is not the first time. I mean, this has progressively been getting worse. But I went around and I canvassed about a half a day on a Saturday. And I, not everybody was home, but it was the only day I had to actually put in a half a day. And at that point, I got 20 some signatures just on that day alone.
Was that on Oakland Avenue only?
Only on Oakland Avenue. Okay, so, you know, I, you know, turned that over to Rhett Mahoney and the speed bumps were put in with your cooperation and Phil and Tim. And I want to say too, that I haven't, my husband and I have no association to Rhett Mahoney, to the mayor, nobody. We're not in politics, we don't, we have no association. I don't even know them. So I've heard that mentioned a few times. I just want to put that to rest right now. We have no association whatsoever. But you know what? I did vote. That's because somebody actually did something for us and is willing to protect our children. For people that are just working people, everyday people. I mean, we want our kids protected, that's all we're asking for. And our cars, and our homes, and our pets. I mean, is that too much to ask? I had one lady tell me, well, you need to keep your kids and your pet in your backyard. Well, my kids aren't out in the street. You know why? They're not allowed up front because of people that continuously drive like nuts through our streets. So what happens when they lose control and they roll over onto a sidewalk? Our kids walk up to the bus every morning. Our bus stop is at the, where Princeton meets Oakland, at the stop sign. And I know there's other kids that meet the bus there too. So this isn't just our kids. There's other kids in the neighborhood that everybody is trying to protect. So, in addition, when we got the speed bumps in and we were so happy about that, but we've been harassed. We've been screamed at, we've had to call the police. I mean, it's ridiculous.
Are people on Oakland?
Most of it's people that are not on Oakland. So they're cutting through our street, but yet they get upset when we want to protect our kids and our property. So my response to that is go a different way if you don't like it. I mean, I don't know what to say. We're just trying to protect our kids, or start driving slower. The speed limit is posted at 25. Okay, so, when we got the speed bumps in, we heard, you know, a lot of, not a lot, a few people that were upset about it. So we got put on the agenda for this meeting and we sent a letter out to all of the residents on Oakland Avenue, just asking them, you know, what their opinion was, letting them know when the city council meeting was and to see whose support we had. And we've got many responses, as you can see. People wrote their thoughts on here and you're welcome to, you know, have these or photocopy them, whatever. I would like to keep a copy. But it, this has been a problem since Mayor Cilio was in office, that they have tried, have tried and tried to get taken care of with no, no success. Now, there, we did have a few people that, you know, they did give their permission for us to speak on their behalf. So there, I really don't know. We may have had one or two people on the entire street of Oakland Avenue that just said, no, we don't want involved in it. But this is what I'm talking about. It's not just us, it's not even just the people in this room that are supporting it. There are even people that are not here that are so happy that the speed bumps have been put in. I mean, we're just tired of it. I mean, it's like, you know, we've had cars drag racing up where the stop signs are. I mean, it, it is ridiculous. Had a comment from somebody else that doesn't live on our street saying that speed bumps belong in trailer parks and projects, I believe was the quote that was said. Well, there are speed bumps in a lot of residential neighborhoods. I think even Heritage Hills, to be exact, maybe some other subdivisions. And as far as the comment about lowering our property values, we live on that street. Do you think I would want to lower my own property value? And I don't care anyway. A child's life is worth more than what a property value is. I mean, I just, we're just upset that we've had a negative response at all because we're trying to protect our kids. I mean, a lot of people here, they brought their kids with them, the Penta's. These are some examples of the kids that are walking up and down the sidewalk. They're not in the street, they're on the sidewalk. So I believe our kids are allowed to be on the sidewalk. I don't think that's a problem. But anyway, they're an example of what we're trying to protect here. So, you know, we have all of this, you know, we can give it to you.
Would you think the people crossing from 40 to 51 would be the people that are more apt to do the speeding? Or do you think it's the people right in the neighborhood?
I would say it's probably both. I think it's some of the people coming from different streets, like Daniel Street. We had one lady that was upset with the speed bump. She was an elderly lady, upset because, you know, she didn't like the speed bumps, they were going to ruin her car. So then she starts driving through our alley behind our house at 60 miles per hour and laying on the horn. So that's when we had to call the police. I mean, come on. We've had other people, when they cross the speed bumps, they're squilling their wheels, they're blowing the horn so that where the speed bumps are, it's disturbing the people right by the speed bumps who didn't initiate this. My husband and I initiated this because we are tired of seeing things happen. And, you know, it's not just our kids we're protecting. We have neighbors that have kids. We have elderly like neighbors. I mean, we had people that just moved in next to us. They have seven children. I mean, is their life not worth anything? I mean, I think it's both ways. We're getting speeders crossing through and we're getting people from Daniel Street and the other neighborhoods surrounding Oakland.
Well, I think we're all about safety and about protecting our kids and all the people. And we want to do it the best way we can do it.
Right.
I don't think anybody here would be against the safety part of this.
Do you think the speed bumps help or helping?
They have helped. We've noticed a reduction in the traffic because it's a nuisance to have to slow down. So they're going a different way. You know, we have, we've, we've noticed people slowing down and with, with the exception of the ones that are still trying to prove a point. You know, they'd rather tear up their car, improve a point than actually slow down.
Are they at the stop signs?
They are right before each stop sign. So like, you know, where Princeton is, there's one up from that.
Right.
And then where the other way, there's one like not too far from. And that was the whole idea, to get them to slow down too before they get to the stop sign. Because people are just cruising through the stop sign. I mean, it doesn't, I don't, it doesn't mean anything. They're not, they're not even bothering the stop. I mean, we, we wouldn't even be opposed to another one further down towards 40. There's an alley there where there's a stop sign on facing this way in the alley. I'm not sure why, I guess just, you know, but even there would be, you know, it can be moved to in front of our house, we don't care. I mean, I, we're just like so tired, I mean, it's.
Well, I would think if they were at the stop sign, you have to stop anyway.
Right. No.
People don't stop at stop signs all through the city. It's an enforcement problem.
I'm talking about the speed bumps being at the stop sign.
Yeah, they're close to it.
They would be doing what they're supposed to do twice.
What did you say, Gary?
Right.
It's a what problem?
It's an enforcement issue.
Chief, you want to speak to that?
Oh, yeah, you're welcome.
Thanks.
I got a copy of a radio show that we were on last week, Mr. Gearing, and kind of alluded to the fact that the speed bumps weren't necessary and it was an enforcement issue. I have personally spoke with numerous residents on Oakland Avenue. I've not got a conversation with you, which you said that I did. I have numerous conversations. I've sat myself on Princeton Avenue at Oakland, watched traffic for periods of time. I've had neighbors come out and they say, well, they stop when you're here. Well, that's just logic. But we can't enforce it 24/7. Aside from that, just to go to the statistics of enforcement, I pulled the Uniontown City Police Department statistics for 2012 to date. And to date, we've issued 663 traffic citations within the city of Uniontown. So from an enforcement standpoint, I would say we're enforcing traffic. But you have numerous issues that are the same as the issue on Oakland Avenue. You have Nassau Street off of 40, exact same thing. They take Nassau to Ben Lomond, Ben Lomond to North Mount Vernon. And there's a bunch of cuts within the city of Uniontown. But we've got three to four police officers working at a time and we handle a call volume of 25 to 35 calls per shift. So, I mean, hey, I'll be glad to enforce all you want. If you authorize me to hire a couple of new police officers, I'll be glad to sit at any stop sign you want.
I'm not saying that you're not busy, Chief.
But you're big.
And I'm not saying, and I'm not saying, I mean, when she even talks about drag racing.
They're articulate to me why it's an enforcement issue.
Growing up, going down Union Street, all the time whenever I was growing up. And as she even said, one of the things that takes place with the speed bumps, when you have people that are just belligerent and want to do things, they raise their back into their car right up there and then burn, do burnouts.
And, and they absolutely do. And when they're, when they're in our presence, we enforce that. But when you declare something an enforcement issue, before you know the backside and before you even say the word, say, how many citations have they issued this year?
The conversation that we had. Whenever I called you, because that's whenever I was even talking to the neighbors on Oakland Avenue as I was walking the street and watching them just zoom up and down and violate the stop sign there. And they were even already telling me that they'd already talked to you and the mayor and weren't, and weren't getting any results. So I'm happy that the people are here. And I'm not opposed to speed bumps. I just want to have a process and a procedure that takes place because there have been numerous people asked for speed bumps all over the city because of similar problems and similar issues. And we need to be able to keep ourselves, as she says. We want our communities, all of our communities, to be safe. And you're doing an outstanding job because we have more issues at stake. And I think everybody knows that the chief is staying busy with other things other than traffic issues. One of the biggest things that we have right now, even. Gary, why don't you let him talk? Are you going to talk all night? No, I'm not.
How can you say that he's doing a job?
I was just going to make the comment, but I'm happy that we have the stoplights the way they are on Main Street because we don't have people going down Main Street. We're not arguing about this, Gary.
An hour anymore. My, my only concern is that there isn't a misrepresentation of what I believe the police department's responsibility is. And I do believe that we have an enforcement responsibility. We are in that neighborhood constantly. I've had communications with the individual where your children go to the bus stop where the bench is. I've sat right in front of there. I've created assignments to have officers sit there. The one problem that you run into, which validates something that you said, being a thoroughfare for people who don't live there, is the fact that when we sit there, what it does is, it controls the stop sign for the people who live there. If they see a police car there, for the next three times they go through the stop sign, they slow down. But guess what we've found? That in many situations, in many instances, it's not the people that even live in the neighborhood. So from an enforcement standpoint, if you selectively, you know, 7:00 AM to 8:00 AM on a Tuesday and 3:00 PM to 4:00 PM on a Friday, it doesn't necessarily curtail the problem as a whole because if those aren't the people that are coming through at that time, they have no knowledge of the enforcement and therefore the disrespect continues. So it's a difficult issue to address as well.
Have I taken you up there?
Well, you were in my car when you went.
Yeah. Different, so to say that we're not responding is just insane. We respond to everything.
And I agree with that. I do.
Just one second. I think what it does, and I don't believe, Christine, you had, you didn't say that, that there was an enforcement issue, right?
No, I'm not.
I think what it does is it, it causes a rift. And Mr. Gearing, you like to do that. You like to cause a problem where there is no problem. These people, and I just would like to know, who is in favor of keeping the speed bumps? So those people were in favor, obviously the rest of you people are not. There are two sides to every coin and we're here to get that information. We're not here to cause trouble or to say somebody's not doing their job. What would you like to do, Mr. Gearing? And I'd like to give you back.
Well, these people are here because there is a problem. And that's what we're trying to resolve and find ways to resolve the problem.
You're not trying to resolve anything, you're trying to cause trouble. More trouble than what there is. We're trying to resolve and I appreciate that.
No, I agree with these people. I'm just trying to help.
Which side? You agree with the side with the speed bumps or the side without the speed bumps? Because this room seems divided. Which side do you agree with?
If speed bumps work, we have to talk to the solicitor because the other thing that we have with speed bumps that we have to work on is what, what our liability is.
Which side do you agree with? The individuals seem to be in the back of the room for speed bumps or these two roads that are on that did not put their hands up. Which side do you agree with?
I'm looking for, put a proper process and procedure together so that which, which you may not have at this point in time to make.
Did he answer the question?
No.
Okay. I already said that I'm not opposed to speed bumps. You didn't hear that earlier? Pay attention.
So you agree with the speed bumps?
Speed bumps can be very advantageous at times, yes. And they're used throughout the county in, in certain spots. But they do come at a cost, as we were talking about. And again, that only goes away when people are.
What is the cost?
Well, you didn't necessarily get rid of all your hazard because somebody is still being belligerent in trying to do things, even when they're going up and down the alleys in the middle of the night. Yeah, everything happens. Everything happens.
It all helps.
Everything helps.
I don't want speed bumps.
All right, let's give the opposition a time to talk. Instead of Gary eating up the whole night. Would you let him come out, whoever represent?
I'll have the solicitor actually even talk about our, our potential liability with speed bumps because that's, that's an issue that council has to be concerned.
Vince, you'd like to come out?
I'm Vince Massey. I've lived on that hill for 65 years, okay? And all this stuff that they're saying is going on, if it happened, it's beyond me. I see people speeding on Oakland Avenue. They speed past my house, okay? Are we going to put speed bumps on every street? Take the asphalt you use for the speed bumps and fix the holes in the road. The roads are terrible. Don't put speed bumps. Mr. Cox, do you? Pardon me?
I said you hit potholes that are better than speed bumps. He said, what's the difference?
They're, yeah, but I'm not happy hitting them. What am I opposing? We did not cure anything. Alls we did was take the.
Hey. Let's speed, let's speed. As long as I all.
Now, wait a minute.
We need to give your time to speak.
Mr. Feig, wait a minute. When she was speaking, we didn't contradict her, did we?
That's what we're saying.
That's what we're saying. Okay.
Continue.
Right. Now, the thing about it is putting speed bumps did not cure the problem. It gave everybody else on the hill a problem. So you didn't do anything good. Take the speed bumps out, have Mr. Cox put some cops up there. He has them. He goes up there, I don't know when, he said he was up there. I drive on that street every day, two and three times a day. I've never seen him. I know him personally and I still never seen him. I've never seen you on Oakland Avenue, never.
I see you all the time, all the time.
Well, of course you would see him all the time.
I saw one this morning at seven o'clock on my way to work.
And what was he doing?
Riding through the neighborhood.
Okay, but the speed bumps are there now. Put him up there and take the speed bumps out. You know what they'll do? They'll get a lot of revenue out of catching the people speeding and we'll be able to use the money to do other things in the city. What's that? Yeah, in somebody else's neighborhood, okay? Now, they said there's speed bumps in Uniontown. Where are they at? Uniontown Shopping Center? Okay, where? Heritage Hills? The city doesn't take care of the streets in Heritage Hills.
Well, that's what I want to do. Continue, I'm sorry.
Okay. Now, I, I mean, there's a lot of people, I know what you're saying. And there's a lot of people in here went on the internet and bad mouthed me about I don't care for children, it's ridiculous. I don't care for children. My mother has 18 grandkids on that hill up there. You think we don't worry about kids getting hit by cars? It's ridiculous. I'm a person too, I have kids. I'm worried about what goes on too. But what's right is right and what's wrong is wrong. First of all, I don't believe the speed bumps were put in legally. They weren't, I know they're not because I already checked into it.
We'll let the solicitor address that at a later time.
Okay, but that's my opinion and I checked into it. Now, they did not cure anything because everybody's coming up Phillippe and shooting up Ben Lomond. They're shooting across Nassau Street just as fast as they did on Oakland Avenue. Okay, so what did we do? We created problems on two other streets now. So where did we help anything? No place. Now, you know what we do? Oh, no, we have to drive over the broken streets up there. We have to drive over speed bumps that are just like the broken streets.
Could I ask you one question?
Yes, you can.
If those speed bumps were right with the stop sign, you have to stop anyway, would it be as much of a bother to go across that speed bump once you're just starting out from the stop sign? And then everybody could, should be happy.
I understand what you're saying, okay? But that's not curing the problem again. Because if you come up and you stop at the stop sign, okay, you're going to go down the road like you do any other time. You've got to enforce the law there. The speed limit's 25 mile an hour. We've got to stop people from speeding, that is the thing. And 90% of the people that are speeding through that neighborhood don't even live there. But they're causing a problem for the taxpayers that do live there, that, that live there and pay their taxes every year.
The thing we were telling is we have to use a different street. We pick taxes on that street just the same as the next person.
Right.
Why do I have to drive around five miles out of my way to get where I'm going?
If they were obeying the law, they wouldn't need to speed them. If they were obeying the law, they wouldn't need to.
Yeah, but, put it this way. I'm obeying the law, why should I have that speed bump?
We need to put that stop sign. We need to put that stop sign.
I know you do. I know you do. Do you see the police there? Well, they're saying they're there. So if you had the police there, you would stop the whole situation.
Moving down the avenue, see how fast they come down the avenue.
That's what I'm saying. I'm not saying there's not a speeding problem. There is, okay? But it's not only on Oakland Avenue. It's on Wine Street, it's on Springer Avenue. I've lived there my whole life. I've grown up watching that. I watch my kids, my grandkids, they all walk to school. I had to walk to school, okay? None of us ever got hit by a car. Okay, we were taught to walk on the sidewalk. But now there's more traffic. What do you got to do? You got to stop the speeding. That's what you got to do. Speed bumps is not the answer.
But those speed bumps are not right at the stop signs. They are down past the driveway, the entrance to the.
Yeah, ask Mr. Robinson what he has to put up with all night when they go to speed bumps, all the clanging and banging and the noise. Why should he have to put up with that?
It's right in front of our house.
Right in front of our house, our house is about a feet away from us.
It's in front, I have to keep my blinds closed because the people that buy them leave it.
Because they don't want them there.
I didn't, what I meant, I didn't ask, I didn't know anything about it.
But again, what I'm saying is they didn't go to the law.
Come on, I'll tell you what we're going to do. We're going to assign the engineer to go up there and do a study. And we'll work off of his recommendation. It does need to be stopped. The traffic needs to be slowed down. I think everybody wants the traffic slowed down. We need to do it the best way we know how. And we can't fight about it, we got to get together on it. And let's make this work.
And your neighborhood isn't the only neighborhood.
And Mr. Gearing, last year, we had two children almost hit by a car last year where they put that stop sign.
Two other neighborhoods, that's false. Ben, overall.
Ben Lomond Circle had.
And it, Grant and Whiten Avenue. They've been there since April, May.
Yeah, no, I wasn't saying that we didn't have speed bumps. I was saying that other neighborhoods have the speeding problems
I was saying that other neighborhoods have the speeding problems and people running stop signs for safety issues.
Mr. Solicitor, can you address this, please?
We'll ask Kim to say it.
I mean, Mr. Gary said they weren't putting correctly. Is that true?
Well, here's the thing about the installation of speed bumps. There is no state law that is a codification of the requirements to put in a speed bump. It's typically, if there is statutory law or codified law that governs it, it's typical, typically by local ordinance. Now, well, Mr. Massey, what you may be referring to when you said you looked into it, I don't know. PennDOT has published a guideline for the installation of speed bumps. That's not a law per se. It's a recommendation from PennDOT as to how municipalities should approach the task of installing a speed bump.
Right.
What they recommend, among other things, is that prior to doing it, the city directs its engineer to do a study of the area, to do a study on the traffic flow, and determine how that speed bump may affect traffic flow in that neighborhood and speed control and some other things. Then the engineer makes a recommendation to the council as to whether or not the speed bump would be wise to have at that location. I think that from a legal standpoint, that's probably something that we should ask Mr. Ober to do here in the immediate future, what the mayor just made reference to.
Right.
Insofar as legal issues, you know, Mr. Gearing made this point. It's not that the speed bumps have gone in in a way that's illegal, because there is no law per se that it violates. However, you do have a civil liability issue that you need to consider. Because if there are procedures that are out there and available, you should make an effort to follow them at least to some degree. Because that way, you know, if something were to happen in relation to the speed bump, we can show that this has been something that's been diligently looked at and that we've studied to, you know, a reasonable degree.
Okay, what I'm trying to say is, if you do this study, okay? It's gonna show you, okay, what the actual problem is, okay? It's speeding, and we all know that, okay? But it gives everybody in this room a fair crack at what's going on. Because you did a study. We got speeding problems, okay? Now, what are we gonna do? We gonna put a cop up there and arrest them? Or are we gonna go all over the hill building speed bumps? And I don't think you're gonna go on all the streets up there that you're speeding on, because first of all... I like through Daniel Street. I don't have any children. My neighbors have kids that play out there on Daniel Street. And I moved back from Moon Township three years ago. I hold my breath all the time. I don't know where they're coming from. It's not people who live on the street or on the hill. They must be making this cut through. I don't know. But they gotta come fifty or sixty and hit their brakes to stop.
I'd like for John, our engineer, to speak on this too. And just before we do that, with the people that score the speed bump, please put your hands up here.
For them.
For them.
For them.
For something. Something.
I really, I really understand. I mean, I'm throughout the city every day. And I understand your... I live on Berkeley Street, and I have hard street parking in front of my house. And every time I get out of a car, I think I'm gonna get hit. And most of... I mean, you know, I agree with you. If you, if the neighbors feel that it will, you know, we need to slow down the area, you live there, we're gonna try to slow it down. And I think the mayor has an excellent recommendation to have John from K2 go up as an engineer. And I do also know that Chief Cox, because I've been with him several times, and the mayor and the chief work hand to hand. I mean, we're trying, and we appreciate you helping us.
Absolutely.
We'll help you, and you can help us. And I realize some of you feel like, you know, you're not being heard. You are. And we'll do what we can to make everybody happy. We're not trying, I mean, one of us is trying to make this easier than it is not. This is not us trying to do wrong by doing any of it.
We're here to represent all of you.
I just, I live on the corner of Philippi and Nassau. And since the speed bumps have been put in, I have problems with speeders anyhow. I live on a corner that people come flying around the corner. It's ridiculous, because they're coming from forty to fifty-one. I mean, we know that.
I'm just gonna hit on you in your corner.
And it is. It's ridiculous. I don't think speed bumps are the answer. I really don't. I don't believe that.
They're just cutting through.
But it doesn't matter. If you put them on one street, all they, by putting them on Oakland, all it has done is doubled the traffic on my street. Because now they come around that blind corner to cut across there instead of coming down Oakland. And I have children myself. I have two children myself, and one on the way. And I, I mean, something's gotta be done. I mean, it's not, you know...
We don't want...
I don't want nobody's child to get run over by a car. That, you know, that would be terrible.
No, no one wants anybody hurt. We don't want speed bumps all over...
But the problem with the speed bumps is, all it has done is moved traffic to another street. It's moved it down. I mean, if the study's done, it's gotta be done through the whole neighborhood.
Well, I think it should be done. John, you're gonna do it through the whole neighborhood, right? Yeah, but actually, the study is, if anybody wants to look it up, the guideline that I will be following is a publication that was developed by PennDOT in 2001. It's called the Traffic Calming Measures Handbook. It was developed by PennDOT in 2001. Speed bumps is what the technical term is. They are certainly a measure that is part of the manual. There are other things involved in it. And we won't look at just one street. We will look at the entire neighborhood. I may come back, and I'm not saying that I will. I may be come back with measures to say, "We're gonna make one street one way, one way, and another street one way, the other way." That may be part of what I come up with.
You won't be saying we're putting speed bumps on every street, will you?
No, no. I mean, basically, there will be conversations that I'll have to have with Chief Cox from the law enforcement side of things. I'll have to talk with the solicitor about the legal aspects of anything that I recommend. And there's gonna be engineering determinations relative to what we do. I mean, some of the other things that may come out is the construction of little doughboys at intersections. It's just stuff that basically, and it does exactly what a speed bump does. It slows the traffic down. It deters non-residents from using residential roads as cut-throughs. And that's what the study will look at.
What about the school? We have a school there. So all that traffic for the school is coming right down our end of the...
That's a big part.
I mean, they don't live there, but they have the school.
But they're a local, they're considered a local delivery. So that's part of the traffic that we do that way, and that's part of the study.
I have been there a little over ten years now. And I see the biggest amount of traffic has been the last five years since the recent development of Walmart and all these other restaurants and stores, and now Pittsburgh Street and the Turnpike and all that stuff. And that's really, we need to keep the traffic to the residents in the local areas. Not really the speed bumps or, you know, it's the outside residents cutting through to get to those areas in between without stopping at the stoplights at the end of the bypass by taking the bypass. You know, they're cutting through that one. So the real, you know, the real study needs to be done on how we can keep the traffic coming around us out on the main roads and not coming through the rear doors. It's the real resolution.
Now, I don't know, I know the people that go down Daniel sixty-seven. I don't know them. I get upset with them, because I don't wanna see any kid get hurt, you know?
John, how long will it take to run the study down?
From Main Street, Route forty to fifty-one.
Gary, Gary, he's... I'm asking the question, Gary, sir. How long will it get done?
I'll probably have a preliminary report ready for the next council meeting in December.
Are we gonna take the speed bumps out to do the study?
I don't think...
What about winter care on the road?
How are the cars while with...
It's gonna be thirty days. So we'll have... How is the winter care gonna take place on the road with the speed bumps?
All we're gonna need one of these days on the road is a stoplight at the bottom of Oakland Avenue to pull out on forty. Somebody's gonna get killed real soon. Not only in the neighborhood, but when you go down and pull off, that's because forty is changed. Forty isn't the forty when we were kids.
It's a racetrack.
We're gonna need a stop, we're gonna need a stop sign, a stop light.
That's what it is.
Stop light wants you to get out without having to...
You wanna make a left, it's a right.
I have a speed bump in front of my house, and I don't wanna go.
Would you like to address the winter problem with the speed bumps?
The speed bumps will be taken out by the fobs. I told everybody not to put them in. They're just laying on top. There's nothing extra.
So they're gonna have to pay to have those speed bumps replaced yearly after you guys tear them back out?
No, if they recommend them put them in right, they'll be in...
They won't be constructed the way they are now.
They'll be, they won't be sitting on top. They'll be in. Another problem I have is on-street parking then.
That will be part of the traffic.
And I'll admit it right now, I beat my horn at every speed bump. And the reason being is, I can't see kids on those sidewalks. Because there are so many cars down both sides. This guy back here parks a trailer hooked to his pickup truck.
That's right, I do. I have a right to do it.
And the trailer is jacked down from both sides.
It's worse than a house on a driveway. Where can you go to park without a driveway in your house?
We're gonna make sure your kids aren't out.
What are you doing?
Like I said, I beat my horn.
You can't hear twenty-five miles an hour.
I live on...
You shouldn't be. You should be. You should be. That used to pump it.
Let's be a dog. We're not acting like a dog.
But you gotta do the whole block. Mr. Frank, thank you so much. The speed bumps have been great deterrent. And I understand everybody has problems. So, you know, we're not trying to, we're not trying to make Oklahoma Avenue the exclusive street here. However, you guys haven't complained or voiced your concerns about your street. We have. So if you want your street taken care of, then you should contact local government and let it work.
Your street is my street. I pay taxes on your street just the same as mine. That is not your street. You don't know that.
And I respect that.
I have to drive that way every single day, and I'm not going out of my way.
You shouldn't have to. You shouldn't have to.
That's right. But the speed limit is twenty-five, and I cannot hit that speed bump in twenty-five miles an hour. This is supposed to speed. At twenty-five, it'll cause damage.
We don't like the danger. But they work.
Let me hear in the pink.
She's beating her horn in front of a senior citizen.
No, her silver Camaro, she tuned through our street.
It's a Trans Am.
A Trans Am.
Yeah, speeding.
She was the main cause. So no wonder she...
The fastest one.
Okay, hold on, everybody. Listen, everybody's had a chance to voice their concerns, whether they're for or against the speed bumps. The mayor has made a recommendation to the city engineer to go ahead and evaluate the situation. Come to a determination, make a recommendation, and we'll go from there. But for us to sit here amongst ourselves and argue isn't gonna solve anything. So with that being said, the council meeting is going to move forward of the guest speaking at this point and go to the next portion of the council meeting. Okay?
Can I get a clarification, Jason, on the size of the quadrant that we're gonna be talking about? Are we gonna go from Route forty to fifty-one, and from Oakland down to Mount Vernon and do the whole area?
It'll be the quadrant, basically encompassing Route forty, North Mount Vernon Avenue, and Route fifty-one. That appears to me to be the cut, the cut-through traffic is going around those primary arteries.
Can we also do it early in the morning?
I'm not gonna count vehicles. I'm gonna do a study based upon what's there in the routes that people were generally using, based on conversations with that. You won't see my staff out there counting vehicles. That's not part of this study. All you have to do is...
It's a traffic study.
It's not a traffic study. It's a traffic calming measure study. All you have to do is, you can Google a handbook and read it just as well as anybody else. You can Google a handbook, and we're not gonna count that.
So, John, to clarify, this study will calm the whole area down, not just Oakland Avenue.
That's correct.
All the cut-throughs.
That's correct.
And all the side streets.
That's correct.
And we may come back with recommendations that the streets become one-way. And you may not like it, but that may be part of my recommendation.
That'd be great. That's one of the things that we talked about too, but we didn't know they could have.
And again, is your study gonna work with the speed bumps there now that it's changed or whatever? That's what these people are saying. Shouldn't it be done without the speed bumps the way the traffic naturally went through? And then make the procedure?
Again, the existing controls out there, stop signs, don't mean anything as to what I'm going to do. I'm gonna evaluate the damage. The stop signs and the things that are out there right now aren't part of what I'm gonna be doing.
Go ahead.
Did you find Chief Cox? Yeah, one at a time, so go ahead.
I've been on Oakland Avenue for eight years now. I have the mayor's office on speed dial, the chief's office on speed dial. I've called many times for the drag racing cars, called many times for the speeders. I have no doubt the speed bumps have definitely lowered traffic and lowered speeding. I have heard at night cars rev their engines, hit their brakes, rev them, hit their brakes, and rev again over the speed bumps. But they have definitely slowed traffic. I understand people's concerns. I feel sorry for anyone who lives right by them.
Very irritated.
I feel sorry for you and anyone else. The cars beating their horns. Personally, I don't wanna go out with a baseball bat and break their cars up.
Thank you.
I really would. But it is slowing traffic.
Anywhere.
But one question I have. Has anybody looked into the possibility of cameras?
Yeah.
So you can take a camera, install it on a telephone pole, and you can see who's speeding and not stopping at the stop sign. Get their license plate and send them a bill in the mail. Is that a possibility?
Well, again, we're gonna let the engineer do his job. He's gonna evaluate the situation. He's gonna come up with recommendations. If those recommendations are cameras, then that's what council will evaluate. But we need to wait for Mr. Ober to go ahead and do his part of the job, and then we'll move forward.
And please understand that the financial constraints of the city will also be part of my study. I mean, you're not talking about a local municipality that has a bankroll sitting there waiting to do work. So part of what I do has to take into consideration the financial constraints of the city.
Well, I think that should be part of the job on council, that you give us some options and some cost estimates so that we can look at...
Councilman Gary, that's absolutely part of my studies.
I have a question. How much does a speed bump cost? Seriously, how much does it cost?
I offered that one.
Now, I mean, being honest, I would like an estimate of how much does a speed bump, uh, speed pump cost?
Probably about forty bucks.
Forty dollars? Okay, we'll say eighty dollars. Chief Cox, how much does it cost to hire one more police officer on staff for the city? I'm not sure. I'd have to get with the city clerk. Roughly, we'll say, you know, an average police officer's starting salary, seventeen dollars an hour over one-year period, forty hours a week. We're looking at probably about thirty-eight to forty thousand dollars a year. I think it's more cost-effective to have a speed bump put in place where it places itself than having a police officer sit on every corner where, okay, hey, you know what? You're gonna say, "Hey, we need a police officer on every corner." Guess what? Each and every one of you can make a citizen's arrest. You can take the license plate number down. You can take it to your local magistrate, and you can take them to court. You do not have to have a police officer standing on every corner to police this entire event. Also, Mr. Palumbo, you were with cities and schools that started the neighborhood playground up there. With this being said, you have the neighborhood playground right in the center of all of this. These children cannot go to this neighborhood, through this neighborhood safely without them being almost hit by a car. You yourself put that together.
I own something that's almost hit by a car.
Okay. With that also being said, Chief Cox, you have done an excellent job. You have turned this city around one street at a time. Now, you've taken care of a lot of the crime in the area. You have taken and gotten a lot of the drugs out of the area. Guess what? Speeding is the least of your concerns when it comes to the small end of it. Now that you've gotten everything else under control, now it's time that we do have to look into this. But going back to this, with this being said, there is a school there. These people should be doing fifteen miles an hour during school hours. Not seventy miles an hour, which I have witnessed down my friend's road. Not eighty miles an hour in the middle of the night that I have also almost got hit by a car.
They're not on that street anymore. They're on my street now.
Exactly.
They're on my street now. Not yours. That is what the speed bumps say.
Then, you know what? Again...
We don't want speed bumps all over the whole neighborhood.
Listen, guys. We're gonna move forward. We're gonna... Everybody now, let's do our job.
Thank you all for coming.
Thank you. Thank you.
How do you find your job?
Yeah, put a notify.
Why the girl's... Why Quincy?
Why didn't we have a meeting?
Gary, he's in the team. We're running out of... He's probably my closest.
I hope you...
He's in the class. We have meetings every month. We have meetings every month. Nobody talks. Yeah, everybody's saying why. Also, no three teams specifically. We had a prom walk meeting in that road. We had one more. Nobody came here. They react.
Wait, he's not. How's it going? He's not chucking anything.
Everyone, hey, everyone, we have an active city council meeting going on. If anyone wants to call, please exit the room.
How are you? You died, and I thought you, I thought you went to school.
I got your jacket back. Bye.
She said baby. I'll come around later.
Yeah, yeah, I knew I saw you.
We're in the council meeting. Everybody, please.
We're in the middle of a meeting. And I'd like to continue with the meeting.
After the meeting.
After the meeting. Who got my jacket?
My mom.
They were shooting. What about this?
I'll do that. Thank you.
All right, the city clerk's going to announce that the executive session was held.
The executive session of council was held on October twenty-third, two thousand twelve for budget and employee contractual issues and following members present. Mayor Fike, Councilman Michael, Councilman Jones, Councilman Gearing, Attorney Bernie Schneider, and City Clerk Hillary Marshall.
Mayor.
Would you start with the resolutions?
He wanted us to comment on the agenda.
No, we've already did all that.
Should we take, primarily, the executive session was for employee issues? It wasn't, it wasn't really, it wasn't a budget?
It was before he got there.
And you came two hours later. We discussed the budget.
Right.
For two hours. Oh, okay. So you did have an executive session for a budget meeting?
You know what I need to know is, wait a minute.
I don't think you're...
I preside over the council. I'm the president of the council. Don't speak unless you ask. And you won't shut up. You keep talking. Go. Now, talk.
Thank you, Mayor. Mr. Solicitor, would you clarify that I don't believe you're allowed to hold an executive session for a budget meeting?
You are here whenever it concerns the contract.
Yeah, if it's over contractual issues, that's personal.
And the budget concern contractual issues.
If you read here, we had a solicitor in the room.
Mr. Gearing?
Uh, yes.
Mayor Pike?
Yes.
The resolve by the city council and the city of Uniontown, the two thousand and twelve city real estate taxes were paid prior to receiving an appeal. Therefore, the following property owner is entitled to a tax repayment refund based on the new assessment figure, refund in amount of five thousand, seven hundred and seventy-one dollars and forty-nine cents.
Mr. Michael?
Here, here. Come.
Elaine's here, she would know. She can answer it.
That's fine. No comment.
No comment.
Mr. Gearing?
No comment.
Mr. Michael?
Yes.
Mr. Palumbo?
Yes.
Mr. Gearing?
Uh, yes.
Mayor Pike?
Yes.
The resolve by the city council and the city of Uniontown, the two thousand and twelve city real estate taxes were paid prior to receiving an appeal. Therefore, the following property owner is entitled to a tax repayment refund based on the new assessment figure, refund in amount of five thousand, seven hundred and seventy-one dollars and forty-nine cents.
Mr. Michael?
Here, here. Come.
Elaine's here, she would know. She can answer it.
That's fine. No comment.
No comment.
Mr. Gearing?
No comment.
Mr. Michael?
Yes.
Mr. Palumbo?
Yes.
Mr. Gearing?
Uh, yes.
Mayor Pike?
Yes.
The resolve by the city council and the city of Uniontown, council hereby accept the minutes of the October third, two thousand and twelve regular council meeting.
No comment.
No comment.
Gearing? Uh, no comment. I'll just be asking a question to refer back to this on the other ordinance that we're gonna pass later and see whether or not it's the same property issue with faith matters.
Mr. Michael?
Yes.
Mr. Palumbo?
Yes.
Mr. Gearing?
Yes.
Mayor Pike?
Yes.
The resolve by the city council and the city of Uniontown, council hereby directs the director of council finance to maintain the following invoices for services rendered for products pursued for the city of Uniontown for October two thousand and twelve. Invoice within the general fund, eighty-eight thousand, seven hundred and forty-six dollars and sixty-two cents. Sewer fund, one hundred and forty-one thousand, seven hundred and fifty-one dollars and fifty-two cents. That includes six thousand, seven hundred and sixty-four dollars and sixty-two cents transferred to the recycling. Off-street, fifteen thousand, one hundred and fifty-three dollars and ninety-six cents. Recycling, two thousand, four hundred and thirty-nine dollars and seven cents. Community development, one hundred and twenty-five dollars and twenty-five cents. Highway fund, eight thousand, three hundred and eighty-seven dollars and forty cents. And recreation, one thousand, four hundred and seventy-two dollars and thirty cents.
No comment.
No comment.
Gearing? Uh, I do have one question is purchase power, is that the name of a vendor that we'd like postage from?
Um, where are you looking?
That's on the sewer system fund on page two.
Yes, that is.
Okay, they're a postage vendor? Okay. I was just curious. I wasn't sure and just wanted to try and make that clarification.
Mr. Michael?
And I did have one other question, just because it showed that we bought two hundred bales of hay. Did we use that for the? We didn't use it anywhere yet.
The council eat it.
We use that on construction jobs. Well, that's what I was getting at, though. Because we didn't line the streets for the Halloween parade, but I was thinking that maybe that was for VFW and the creek and some of the other things that we're gonna be working on. Okay, I'll check.
Mr. Michael?
Are we both?
Yes.
Mr. Palumbo?
Yes.
Mr. Gearing?
Uh, yes.
Mayor Pike?
Yes.
The resolve by the city council and the city of Uniontown, the two thousand and twelve city real estate taxes were paid prior to receiving an appeal. Therefore, the following property owner is entitled to a tax repayment refund based on the new assessment figure, refund in amount of five thousand, seven hundred and seventy-one dollars and forty-nine cents.
Mr. Michael?
Here, here. Come.
Elaine's here, she would know. She can answer it.
That's fine. No comment.
No comment.
Mr. Gearing?
No comment.
Mr. Michael?
Yes.
Mr. Palumbo?
Yes.
Mr. Gearing?
Yes.
Mayor Pike?
Yes.
The resolve by the city council and the city of Uniontown, that according to recommendation of actuary Joe Sictor to allocate the two thousand and twelve state aid from the city of Uniontown's pension and fire, police and fire pension plan as followed. One hundred and seventy-three thousand, eight hundred and seven dollars and thirty-two cents for the police plan, and eighty thousand, nine hundred and seventy-five dollars to the fire plan.
I'll comment on that. Joe and Kim and I had a conference call, discussed the state aid. He outlined it for us. It was a, I asked him for a letter, which he attached to this resolution, and I think that Joe's been doing this for a long time. I think his analysis is correct, and I hope that the mayor and Councilman Palumbo would agree. Mr. Palumbo?
No comment.
Mr. Gearing? No comment.
Mr. Michael?
Yes.
Mr. Palumbo?
Yes.
Mr. Gearing?
Uh, yes.
Mr. Palumbo?
Yes.
Mr. Gearing?
Yes.
Mayor Pike?
Yes.
The resolve by the city council and the city of Uniontown, to adopt proposed ordinance number sixteen sixty-three, bill number sixteen eighty-three, and amendment to part nine of the codifying ordinances of the city of Uniontown. In ordinance amending articles nine oh one, nine oh three, nine oh five, nine oh seven, nine oh nine, nine eleven, and nine twelve of the city of Uniontown's codifying ordinances, codifying ordinance number fourteen fifty-five, requiring a permit and bond prior to the opening and excavation in any street or sidewalk in the city of Uniontown, establishing permit fees and bond requirements, providing for the manner of repairs to excavation, repealing prior inconsistent ordinances, and establishing violations for penalty.
Mr. Michael? No comment. Mr. Palumbo?
No comment.
Mr. Gearing? Uh, I just want, this is the second reading, correct? Just wanted to get that in there.
Mr. Michael?
Yes.
Mr. Palumbo?
Yes.
Mr. Gearing?
Yes.
Mayor Pike?
Yes.
The resolve by the city council and the city of Uniontown, to introduce proposed ordinance number sixteen sixty-four, bill number sixteen eighty-four. An ordinance to amend the code of the city of Uniontown, Baytown, Pennsylvania, by amending the city code thereof, rental properties, to add a new article entitled rental licensing and inspection, to require licensing and inspection of residential rental properties, to require payment of licensing and inspection fees, to provide for suspension and revocation of rental licenses, to require access for inspection, and to provide for penalties and enforcement, repealing prior inconsistent ordinances and parts of ordinances, providing for a repealing prior inconsistent ordinances and parts of ordinances, providing for a savings clause and setting an effective date, and to direct the city clerk to advertise appropriate notice of intention to adopt said proposed ordinance at the regular meeting of city council on December fifth, two thousand and twelve.
Mr. Michael? Um, K two engineering and John over brought that, this to our attention. I've had a couple of conversations with him in my other line of business. I am in and out of homes all day long, and I think that this is a good first step to continue our development of our code enforcement and our property maintenance. I think this will help us. We have talked to the fire department, they're gonna assist us with this. It's going to, number one, I think, good for people who rent homes in this city, and it protects them, there are some safety considerations that it will assist us, it helps, it gets the fire department in these rental units and to understand them. It helps with K two and the building code phase of this.
Does that mean that you'll go into all the buildings and do an inspection? Or the fire company will?
It's intended for the fire company.
Will you be able to go in Mr. Gearing's building? We've never seen Bailey go in in three years.
It will require, it will require annual inspections on all rental, all rental units. And there's a set of minimum standards that those units have to have. They're life, health, safety standards. It requires the landlords to file application with the city, listing the residents of that unit, who's occupying that unit. If there's a change of residency in that unit, they have to notify the city of the change of residency in that unit.
Who enforces that?
It'll be the fire department. The fire department will be responsible for the inspection.
Did you enable that, Chuck?
So I think that it's gonna be a great partnership between code, the fire department, K two engineering. I think it helps the residents, and I'm fully for it.
Most of the responses that we have had, and issues that we have had, have been in rental units, not in units that people own.
Most of all of them, right?
I mean, just one hundred percent. One hundred percent. I would say that most of the percentage of the responses that the fire department has relative to fire call-outs are probably related to rental units, landlord units within the city. The city has approximately, according to, in conversations with Mr. Yager, you're around forty-nine percent of your units in the city are rental units. So you're looking at approximately twenty-two hundred units in the city for inspection.
Right, there's about forty-five hundred partials.
Yes.
And half of those are rentals?
That's correct. So, I mean, you're basically a landlord community, so.
Just one more thing, Mayor, and I think Jeff will speak this. I go to the read-and-see meetings, I go to the East End meetings, and both these groups are very in favor. Larry is here, and I think that his group is in favor of it. Jeff, I think you can speak to it.
I think we're all in favor of it. The only thing, we have to make this cost-effective. We can't destroy somebody's business either by tacking something one too high. You have to come up with a decent price to do it.
Yeah, I mean, and that's something that's within the regulations, and it's something that can be looked at by council. What's proposed, what I have proposed certainly is in line with surrounding communities, but that's something that council can look at relative to the fees to do these inspections, and also the penalties associated with not complying with the inspections.
John, can I ask you a question? Could, in, this is an introduction of an ordinance, are you, do you know how much you can change an ordinance before its adoption without having to re-advertize it? I mean, if they decided to do that, to lower the fees, isn't there like a aggregate amount that you have to stick to, or that you can change and buy, I should say?
I'd have to defer to JW on that. I'm not quite sure.
And what did we originally talk about? Fifty dollars?
It's fifty dollars for the first unit plus forty for each additional up to.
Up to fifty.
Like a sliding scale?
It's a sliding, it's a sliding scale. I think it's fifty dollars plus forty dollars for each additional unit after the first unit, up to ten units, and then I forget what the scale is after, but then it goes from ten to twenty, twenty to thirty, and thirty and above. And it's a sliding scale. Once you get to thirty and above, I believe, if I'm not mistaken, it's two hundred and fifty dollars plus twenty-five dollars for every unit after thirteen or something like that, so.
What specifically were you asking?
I was asking if you can change the fees.
If that fee schedule changes because.
From now till the adoption, without having to re-advertize. Aren't you able to change it in a certain amount? I know with the budget, you can change it within the.
Ten percent.
Yeah, of the aggregate.
Yeah. I don't think that you have to set fees in stone by ordinance. The ordinance establishes a fee.
I think you can lower it.
Yeah.
I think it's gonna go up.
I'm almost positive. I'll double-check on that. I'll hand them on a hundred percent sure. I think that's the way it is. I think you can lower it.
But not raise it.
But you can't raise it without raising it.
If it's more than twenty-five percent.
My concern is, I have twenty units.
I am.
Go ahead, beat me up.
You would be two hundred and fifty dollars plus twenty-five per additional unit over thirteen.
I'm okay with the multiple units, but I think maybe the fifty plus forty per each unit could maybe go a little lower. What do you think, Mayor? Maybe fifty go to thirty?
You're getting close.
Do we need to set that to eighty?
Well, I think that's something we could talk about. That, just that alone.
Yeah, I think what Kim just said, that as long as it doesn't go above what's proposed, you can go lower, and you'll be okay.
You go lower, it'd be lower because there's no prejudice to the public. The idea is, the whole purpose of an introduction of an ordinance and an adoption is to give the public a chance to object to it.
Whatever we say.
It's unlikely that if you drop, that the people object.
Mayor, whatever we say, you're gonna let us send your properties, and you're gonna pay it, right?
I guess.
There's a hand.
Some safety considerations that it will assist us, it helps, it gets the fire department in these rental units and to understand them, it helps with K-2 and the building code phase of this.
Does that mean that you'll go into all the buildings and do an inspection? Or the fire company will?
It's intended for the fire company.
Will you be able to go into Mr. Gearing's building? We've never seen him go in in three years.
It will require, it will require annual inspections on all rental, all rental units. And there's a set of minimum standards that those units have to have. They're life health, safety standards. It requires the landlords to file application with the city, listing the residents of that unit, who's occupying that unit. If there's a change of residency in that unit, they have to notify the city of the change of residency in that unit.
Who enforces that?
It'll be the fire department. The fire department will be responsible for the inspection.
Did you handle that, Chuck?
So, I think that it's gonna be a great partnership between code, the fire department, K-2 engineering, I think it helps the residents and I'm fully for it.
Most of the responses that we have had and issues that we have had have been in rental units, not in units that people own.
Not all of them, right?
I mean, just 100%. 100%. I would say that most of the percentage of the responses that the fire department has relative to fire callouts are probably related to rental units, landlord units within the city. The city has approximately, according to, in conversations with Mr. Yager, you're around 49% of your units in the city are rental units. So you're looking at approximately 2,200 units in the city for inspection.
Right, there's about 4,500 partials.
Yes.
And half of those are rentals?
That's correct. So, I mean, you're basically a landlord community, so.
Just one more thing there, and I think Jeff will speak this. I go to the Read and See meetings, I go to the East End meetings, and both these groups are very in favor of it. Larry is here, and I think that his group is in favor of it. Jeff, I think you can speak to it.
I think we're all in favor of it. The only thing, we have to make this cost effective. We can't destroy somebody's business either by tacking something one tone too high. You have to come up with a decent price to do it.
Yeah, I mean, and that's something that's within the regulations and it's something that can be looked at by council. What's proposed, what I have proposed certainly is in line with surrounding communities, but it's, you know, that's something that council can look at relative to the fees to do these inspections and also the penalties associated with not complying with the inspections.
John, can I ask you a question? Could, in, this is an introduction of an ordinance, are you, do you know how much you can change an ordinance before its adoption without having to re-advertize it? I mean, if they decided to do that, to lower the fees, isn't there like a aggregate amount that you have to stick to or that you can change it by, I should say?
I'd have to defer to JW on that, I'm not quite sure.
And what did we originally talk about? $50?
It's $50 for the first unit plus 40 for each additional up to...
Up to 50.
Like a sliding scale?
It's a sliding, it's a sliding scale. I think it's $50 plus $40 for each additional unit after the first unit, up to 10 units. And then I forget what the scale is after, but then it goes from 10 to 20, 20 to 30, and 30 and above. And it's a sliding scale. Once you get to 30 and above, I believe, if I'm not mistaken, it's $250 plus $25 for every unit after 13 or something like that, so.
What specifically were you asking?
I was asking if you can change the fees...
If that fee schedule changes because...
From now till the adoption, without having to re-advertize. Aren't you able to change it in a certain amount? I know with the budget, you can change it within the...
10%?
Yeah, of the aggregate.
Yeah, I don't think that you have to set fees in stone by ordinance. The ordinance establishes a fee.
I think you can lower it.
Yeah.
I think it's putting it up.
I don't think you can raise it without, I'm almost positive, I'll double check on that, I'll hand them 100% sure, but I think that's the way it is. I think you can lower it.
But not raise it?
But you can't raise it without reading the...
If it's more than 25%.
My concern is, I have 20 units.
I am...
Go ahead, beat me up.
You would be $250 plus 25 per additional unit over 13.
I'm okay with the multiple units, but I think maybe the 50 plus 40 per each unit could maybe go a little lower. What do you think, Mayor? Maybe 50 go to 30?
You're getting close.
Do we need to set that tie?
Well, I think we, that's something we could talk about. That, just that alone.
Yeah, I think what Kim just said, that as long as it doesn't go above what's proposed, you can go lower and you'll be okay.
You go lower, it'd be lower because there's no prejudice to the public. You know, the idea is, the whole purpose of an introduction of an ordinance and an adoption is to give the public a chance to object to it. You know, it's unlikely that if you drop that, the people object.
Mayor, whatever we say, you're gonna let us send your properties and you're gonna pay it, right?
I guess.
There's a hand up.
I'm lower body.
You got a hand up.
50 plus 40.
Yes?
I'd like to make the suggestion that we table this so that it can be reviewed and looked at and picked up at the, at the next meeting.
I strongly disagree with that, Mayor, because we need to, we need to put this in the budget. We can discuss the numbers for December, but I, we need, we're gonna have a budget meeting, a special budget meeting. We need to move on this because we need the revenue for 2013. If we, if we wait till December, then the second reading's off till January, and I'm not comfortable with the budget numbers. I want budget numbers so we have a budget by the end of the year.
Yes, Jeff?
You know, Mayor, I just wanted to, I didn't realize this was on the agenda as well. I have heard that was coming up, and I gotta say, I'm very excited about it because representing some of the folks in the Elm Street neighborhood, Galton Avenue, Weeds Street, lawfare at East End. I mean, you never, almost every meeting I go to, this is the major point of contention. We can talk about, hey, redevelopment authorities tearing this house down, tearing that house down, we're building these new houses on Maple Street, we're doing this, seeing the building on Galton Avenue. But these residents, I mean, they're like, what about the house next to me? What about this? What about the surrounding? There's, you know, there's garbage, there's dogs, there's, you know, we're not allowed to get in these houses. I mean, I hear it every meeting, and it's, you know, I think if you guys can get in these units, see what they're like, because I know the fire department gets in there, the police get in there, but that's only if they get called and they see them.
And Jeff, that's why I believe in the August meeting, I, John came to the meeting with the Read and See meeting, that was August, right, Larry?
Yeah.
And John came to the meeting and he listed the concerns, and we developed this based on that. And I really think that, that, I mean, I appreciate John's efforts in this and your efforts, Jeff, because you and Larry, the rest of the Read and See, you guys pushed us, and that's why I went to John and said, we gotta do something for these people. So with that and with the revenue source and I need, for the budget with the fire department, I don't wanna wait until December or anywhere. I think that dragging it out is just for people's own interest.
Yeah.
But we don't wanna put nobody out of business. All we wanted to do was just try to get these landlords to clean up what they own and make it a safe place for people to live in.
And let me say, most of the landlords that I deal with every single day work hard, and there are many landlords in this room that work hard and do what they're supposed to do and want the right, and want to do right. But we have to protect the residents and the community. I think with Wade Mayor...
What do you say if you inspect in everybody's house?
You can come to mine, huh?
That's fine.
No, I mean, with a fee, and then we wouldn't have to worry about the budget. How's that sound?
I'm gonna inspect by, I'll say, tell you what.
I'll walk the streets with you, with the flag.
I have just one more thing, I don't want to belabor, but you know what, one of the reasons we have to tear down all these houses is a lot of times, these rental, these houses, somebody buys them, they let it run to the ground, it's usually a rental unit, I mean, a lot of time, it could be a homeownership situation. But, you know, they buy, they run it down to the ground, and then we have this empty shell sitting there, the window's broke and stuff like that, and it's like, as redevelopment authority, it's kinda like, well, what are we gonna do about this? People complain to us, what are you gonna do about that building? It's in bad shape. So we end up having to purchase it. So it ends up, we use a lot of our grant money to buy these old places and tear them down. And then that, that loses tax money. If we're ever to keep these houses updated and kept up, keep quality residents, tenants in them, that's a win for everybody.
Let me drink.
Yeah, I'm not opposed to what we're doing here. It's 16 pages, haven't had a chance to review it all yet. I'd like to ask, Mr. Palumbo, have you had a chance to review this ordinance yet?
Uh, no, I have not.
Mr. Michael?
Excuse me, I'm talking at the moment.
I'm gonna ask you, how long have you had this document to review?
I've seen it several times.
Okay.
Because I'm, I mean, I made the initiative to...
And that's fine. I mean, what do you do, instead of, instead of always, instead of always contradicting what we wanna do, why don't you get on board with something once in a while?
I'm not contradicting, I'm trying to get, I'm trying to...
It was passed out the last meeting, right? John, did you pass this out the last meeting?
I was actually out of town when it was available.
How hard is it to understand? Inspect, pass, that's it.
It's a first reading.
There's nothing wrong with inspecting places, they ought to be done. You're talking about that and a fee, and what else is it under state?
Do I have a second to Mr. Gearing's motion to table this resolution? Motion dies at 8:11.
Can we vote?
We have a vote on it.
Can we vote?
Yeah.
Mr. Michael?
Yes.
Mr. Palumbo?
Yes.
Mr. Gearing?
Uh, I'm gonna pass, since I haven't had a chance to review and I don't know what it is that I'm doing.
Mayor, please.
What's that?
Mayor, please.
Yes. You'll kill me if I don't.
Here is all by the City Council and City of Uniontown to authorize the mayor to execute an agreement of sale and deed between the City of Uniontown and Fayette Economic Development Council to finalize the city's purchase of a certain tract of land containing 2.40 acres in the re-subdivision lot number three of Colwick Run Plan of Lots Number Two, as shown on the survey at McMillan Engineering dated July 2012 and recorded in the office of the Recorder Fees for Fayette County, Pennsylvania, and Plan Book 91, page 97.
Is this for that rotary walk?
Yes. Phil, do you have any comment? Remember the last time we commented on this? We was here for an hour. We all understand, so do you have any comments?
On me?
Yeah.
No, sir.
Mr. Gearing?
Oh, well, I brought this up earlier, is this...
Yeah, an hour's worth.
Than what we were talking about, getting the clarification on the parcel number?
No, no, this isn't that.
This is...
This is different. This is the Colwick, the Rotary Walk project.
Okay.
This is, that was, that was something else. This is, that was a later thing. This thing's been going on for a while. We're gonna purchase this track to extend the Rotary Walk from Fayette. And we're gonna...
It's the same thing.
Yeah, it is.
Yeah, it's the same thing.
I see it in my sleep.
Same parcel.
The other, the other was from the planning commission and the work to, to be done in the recent subdivision. This is just for the deed.
Oh, yeah, 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 okay. Yeah, it, we don't need to clarify that.
That's what I was trying to clarify. This isn't the subdivision situation.
No, this, this is the actual purchase.
Since this didn't have the parcel number on it, I just wanted to make sure.
That, yeah, that's the confusion. This is the actual purchase, these are the documents for the actual transfer of the property.
Right.
Not the subdivision.
Right.
All right, can we vote?
Mr. Michael?
Yes.
Mr. Palumbo?
Yes.
Mr. Gearing?
Yes.
Mayor, please.
Yes.
Here is all by the City Council and the City of Uniontown that the Director of the Council Finance be authorized to contract an outside billing agency to bill for the fire department services at accident fire scenes, subject to the amendment of ordinance number 1537, an ordinance establishing charges for services provided by the Uniontown Fire Department at motor vehicle accident scenes.
I'll speak to this. Firefighter Vansicle brought this to my attention a while back. He's also the fire chief in Farmington. They utilize this in Farmington. Myself and Kim Renzi, who could be here tonight, did some research. The research is, there is one company that we have in your pocket. That company is because Mr. Renzi felt that they're, they're local, they're out of Scottsdale, and they have some, they come highly recommended. One of the recommendations is from Firefighter Vansicle. So this will allow us to, to work with insurance companies. The city tried to do this before, many years ago, it wasn't really effective. There are some pros and cons. It isn't as easy as it looked, but we should see some financial success through insurance carriers. And again, it's another revenue source that we, we're gonna continue to try to grow to, to help the taxpayers so we don't, so we can balance a budget and provide excellent service. And I would like Firefighter Vansicle and Chief Fulmer both to comment on this. Brian?
I'll speak on it, just because we already have the company in place. We've had it in Farmington for about 14 years now, and what we do is, everybody has a line item in their insurance package that allows for emergency service, whether it's $35, whatever the fee is, the insurance company sets it. We take the information, which we already do that now as part of our job, we fill out a blank paper, we fax it to them, they do the rest. In Farmington, we stop at the insurance companies. If the insurance doesn't have a line item in the policy to pay for emergency services, we do not go after the individual, that'll be up to the city.
We're not gonna go after them.
Okay. You know, we can even do that for house fires as well. Everybody in their homeowner's policy has some sort of line item in there for emergency services. It may only be 100 bucks, could be 200, but it could help us down the road with paying for fuel for the truck squad with these scenes. Like I said, we've gotten good returns back as long as you're doing the paperwork. Specing charges 10 or 15% for their rep, for their partner. Yeah, so it's just another way to generate revenue without burdening the residents of the city. That's all. Chuck?
Yeah, you know, basically, we're running, it's an automatic response on any motor vehicle accidents, we send the fire engine and the rescue. So I just agree with Brian, we discussed this in great detail. That is something, as we look to the future with the fire service in the city, any way we can generate, whether it's a nominal fee or whatever, it's certainly gonna help our budget. And also along those same lines with the inspection units, you know, historically, with the economy in today's world across the country, most fire departments are taking over code enforcement and those type things. So we're gladly willing to step up to the plate and get involved in the inspection of the rental units. It's gonna get us out of the public eye, and like you said, it's gonna get us into the buildings to look around, so.
We all know, we all know the city's development of budget, and times are tough, and I'm not gonna belabor that, but the fire, the fire department understands that we need to think outside the box. And I've had several meetings with the chief and with Brian at the union and other members of the fire services under the mayor's direction, and I just wanna commend that for a couple of these, a couple of these resolutions that are coming up here are because of some of the conversations we had, and we all understand we have to continue in this area. That's my comments.
Thanks, Mayor.
Jovi, any comment?
No comment.
Mr. Gearing?
Yeah, is there any reason why this can't be put out to bid?
Professional service, we, we checked with several different sources, and it could be put out to bid, but there's nobody else local. I'd like to, I mean, I think people local, and Brian has good success with it. We put it out to bid, we're gonna go somewhere that maybe we don't know, it might be Pittsburgh, it could be, there's the biggest one, Philadelphia. These people are local, and Farmington does well with it, I don't know why we reinvent with it. And that's up to council.
Are we ready to vote on that?
I am.
Mr. Michael?
I would still like to ask another question. Do I have permission to speak, Mayor?
Yes.
Oh, thank you.
You're welcome.
If we're going to enforce, will there, will there be an enforcement ordinance that goes along with this, or is the enforcement ordinance actually already 1537?
I don't know what you mean by enforcement.
They're, well, as Brian said, they use a discretionary method on who they enforce it against and who they don't enforce it against.
There's an enforcement provision in the existing ordinance. There's a proposed, we intend to change the enforcement provision to tweak, to tweak the existing amendment a lot, because there, I've reviewed this ordinance, the existing ordinance, it's from 1997. I see a lot of holes in it. I think the whole thing just kinda needs gutted and redone, and that's one of the things we're going to address, is the enforcement provision, which provides right now that it'll be a summary of offense and applying conviction, you'll be sentenced to pay a fine not to exceed $300, 30 days' appeal, something to that effect. But that's something that we're gonna look at and maybe change.
Mr. Michael?
Yes.
Mr. Palumbo?
Yes.
Mr. Gearing?
I'm gonna vote no. I think that these things should, I don't have anything against the existing company, and I have a lot of respect for Mr. Vansicle and his opinion, but I would like to see things go out to bid.
Mayor, please.
Yes. Before you read the next resolution, since we're talking with the fire company, I'd like to make a motion to designate the Deputy Director of Public Safety to perform the duties of personnel in day-to-day operation. Designate the Director of Public Safety to perform budgetary duties. If it's one person's department, they should try to at least step up the plate and help do the budget. Do I have a second?
I have a second.
Mr. Michael?
Are we commenting?
Yes.
Again, I'm gonna ask, if you don't mind, the chief for comment. Chief, you all right with that?
I work with everybody, I do not have a problem, no, sir, no.
I mean, do you have...
Well, we got a second over here, Phil. What's your question?
You have to vote on it.
Yeah.
Oh, I'm sorry.
You have to vote on the motion.
Where are we at?
I'm sorry, well, I'm sorry. Yes.
Okay.
I apologize.
Yes.
Mr. Gearing?
May I see what you're proposing that the solicitor is holding?
Can you hear me?
Well, I'm seeing the solicitor squint, and he's not sure, it doesn't seem that he'd be sure as to what...
He's sure of everything, just go ahead. He's the one causing the whole hundred voters in.
Can we vote or will they have a break? Seems, seems that the solicitor seems to have a few problems with it?
No, I don't think, I'm just, I'm just trying to take it, work for work.
All right, let me read it so that we can vote on it. The mayor made a motion that was seconded by Mr. Palumbo to designate the Deputy Director of Public Safety to perform the duties of personnel in day-to-day operation, and to designate the Director of Public Safety to perform budgetary duties.
And what's wrong with that?
We voted.
Let's vote.
Mr., I got Mr. Michael, Mr. Palumbo, Mr. Gearing?
Uh, no.
And Mayor, please.
Absolutely, yes.
Okay, here is all by the City Council and the City of Uniontown to authorize the conversion of the former police station at Easton Avenue to rental space and to advertise for a tenant. Further, to authorize the Director of Council Finance to negotiate and execute a lease agreement on behalf of the city.
It's a similar way, it increases revenue, tops for the fire too, and he was okay with it, so that's why I brought it to council.
Is it open up to any, any kind of tenant, or is there a certain kind of...
Well...
Well, I mean...
We'll look for the tenant once we redo the inside of the deal, please.
We have a few, a few people that are interested and, you know, but we need some authorization to go forward.
Mr. Gearing?
Do we have any cost estimates?
I'm sure we'll get them before we go to start doing anything. But we do have tenants that's interested, and I spoke with a couple of them.
Well, any contract should be voted on by council, not by, and, you know, shouldn't be the sole discretion of an individual.
Nobody said that. I said I've spoke with them. They're interested, and I will bring it before council. You're not gonna believe this, but I never went to school to learn to be a mayor like you did, councilman. You should've went back.
Well, what you do is, you talk to a tenant, whatever they want, whatever they...
Right.
So it's up to them what the, what the cost is gonna be.
Jovi, what I, this was actually, this was actually my idea when I was asked about this, this resolution. It seems like to me, and this is up to council, but it would be easier, when you're negotiating a lease, there's a lot of actin' for it, and it just seemed to me like it would be easier to designate one of your member and for, by default, the mayor.
He says me.
Well, you, the Council Finance, whoever, I mean, just one individual from the number of council who council authorizes to do that negotiation, negotiating on council's behalf rather than having to come back here every time there's a counter offer for a lease term of some kind, because leases have a lot of terms, you know? Not only price, who's gonna pay for what, you know, terms, you know, defaults, default remedies, I mean, there are all kinds of things that go in a lease, and it just seemed to me like negotiating a lease would be cumbersome if all of council was doing it at once, rather than just designate somebody.
The mayor and I have already been working on this, he's, we've already discussed a couple of tenants. He had one, he, I had one, and I think that, you know, and Jovi, I'll keep, you know, I'll keep...
We never know, we never know, you know what the cost will be until they tell you what they require.
We're just gonna try to get a tenant, then we'll bring her down.
Yes.
My basic situation is executing the lease agreement on behalf of the city. The council should actually be voting on executing the contract. It should be made a public document and brought to council after the negotiations. I don't have a problem with one person negotiating a contract and trying to find out what, what's gonna happen or take place, but before any contract is signed...
You're saying the finished product of the negotiation.
I make a motion to take out the execution, can we vote on this? We can take out the execute. I make a motion to take out the word execute.
Somebody have a second? I'll say.
Okay, Mr. Michael, is the vote on your motion to take out the word execute as this resolution, that's sent by Mr. Palumbo? Mr. Michael, yes? Mr. Palumbo? Voting on that motion?
Just take out the execute.
Yes.
Mr. Gearing?
Yeah, so we're not going to do any build out until we've actually negotiated a lease with the tenant, correct?
Yes, yes, yes.
Okay, this is a vote on this resolution to authorize the conversion of the former police station on Easton Avenue to rental space and advertise for a tenant. Further, to authorize the Director of the Council Finance to negotiate and a, and a lease agreement on behalf of the city.
Yes.
Mr. Michael?
Yes.
Mr. Palumbo?
Yes.
Mr. Gearing?
Yes.
Mayor, please.
Yes. Wow, I love to be yes.
Here is all by the City Council and the City of Uniontown to find the 1999 Jeep that was formerly owned by the Assistant Fire Chief to the Code Office that it called.
No comment.
Jovi, no comment. Mr. Gearing?
No comment.
Mr. Michael?
Yes.
Mr. Palumbo?
Yes.
Mr. Gearing?
Yes.
Mayor Pike?
Yes.
It was all by the City Council of the City of Uniontown to require the Uniontown Fireman's ambulance to enter a written lease agreement with the city for its continued use of the public safety building located on Deason Avenue on or before January 1st, 2013. Further, to authorize the Director of Council Finance to negotiate the terms of any such lease agreement and to execute the same on behalf of the city, subject to the provision that all or a portion of the monthly utility expenses will be their responsibility of the Uniontown Fireman's ambulance.
Mr. Mike?
I've already been talking to the fire chief. We're going to talk to various parties, and we'll get back to council. I think that the Uniontown Fireman's Ambulance provides an excellent service to the city, and they're willing, they understand what the budgetary crunch they're in, they're willing to step up. So between the fire chief and the Uniontown Fireman's Ambulance, we'll get something through next month.
Echo?
Are they paying anything now?
Not currently, but we're going to work with them.
Mr. Gary? I have the same issue with the execute. We should make the document public and vote on it by council, and it should not be done by an individual.
I make a motion to take the word execute out.
Do I have a second?
I'll say.
Vote on taking the word execute out?
Yes.
Mr. Michael, Mr. Palumbo?
Yes.
Mr. Gearing?
Yes.
Mayor Pike?
Yes. I didn't think execution was legal in Pennsylvania anyway.
Okay, is voting on this resolution without the word execute in the agreement? Mr. Michael?
Yes.
Mr. Palumbo?
Yes.
Mr. Gearing?
Yes.
Mayor Pike?
Yes.
It was all by the City Council of the City of Uniontown, whereas the redevelopment authority of the City of Uniontown was created by the City of Uniontown to serve as the Community and Economic Development Agency, and whereas the redevelopment authority of the City of Uniontown has operated the Main Street program for the city, whereas the redevelopment authority desires to apply for a facade grant in the amount of $30,000 from DCED for the purposes of making facade grants available to building and store owners in a designated Main Street program target area. Whereas the redevelopment authority has agreed to comply with all applicable sections of the contract if the grant is awarded between the DCED and the redevelopment authority. Whereas the redevelopment authority will secure the full local matching share of project costs from participating Uniontown merchants. Whereas the redevelopment authority agrees to reimburse the DCED for the common law of Pennsylvania's share of any expenditures which are determined to be ineligible by the DCE at project closeout. Now, therefore, the City of Uniontown hereby agrees to allow and support the application being submitted by the redevelopment authority to the DCE for a facade grant.
Mark Yager, would you want to say something with this?
Yes, Mayor, this is part of the main exit of the Main Street program. This is the facade portion. We have a loan fund of $30,000.
Is that a matching fund?
Yes, it's matched by the building owners for facade works. They can get a grant for up to $5,000 if they match it with $5,000. They do work on their facades on the building.
Thank you. Comment? Comment? Comment?
Yes, sir.
Mr. Michael?
Yes.
Mr. Palumbo?
Yes.
Mr. Gearing?
Yes.
Mayor Pike?
Yes.
It was all by the City Council of the City of Uniontown, whereas the redevelopment authority of the City of Uniontown was created by the City of Uniontown to serve as its Community and Economic Development Agency, and whereas the redevelopment authority has operated the Main Street program for the city, whereas the redevelopment authority of the City of Uniontown desires to apply for an operating grant in the amount of $60,000 from DCED for the purpose of continuing the operation of the Main Street program. Whereas the Uniontown Downtown Business District Authority at its August 13, 2012 board meeting voted to provide the matching money. Whereas the redevelopment authority of the city has agreed to comply with all applicable sections of the contract if the grant is awarded between the DCED and the redevelopment authority. Whereas the redevelopment authority of the city agrees to reimburse DCED's share of any expenditures which are determined to be ineligible by the DCE at project closeout. Now, therefore, the City of Uniontown hereby agrees to allow and support the application being submitted by the redevelopment authority to the DCE for an operating grant.
You witness where I missed it.
The City of Uniontown has clauses agreement to be duly signed and executed as of the day and year before it's upgraded.
Thank you. Comment, Mr. Mike?
Yes, sir.
Palumbo? Gearing?
No comment.
Mr. Michael?
Yes.
Mr. Palumbo?
Yes.
Mr. Gearing?
Yes.
Mayor Pike?
Yes.
It was all by the City Council of the City of Uniontown, whereas the City of Uniontown, through the redevelopment authority of the city, in the process of continuing the Elm Street program in the Gallatin Avenue neighborhood through the redevelopment authority. Whereas the Pennsylvania Department of Community and Economic Development has funding available to operate Elm Street programs in the common law of Pennsylvania, and whereas the City of Uniontown has a cooperation agreement with the redevelopment authority of the city to administer the Elm Street program on its behalf. Whereas the redevelopment authority of the city has agreed to comply with all applicable sections of the contract if the grant is awarded between the DCED and the redevelopment authority. Whereas the redevelopment authority of the city agrees to reimburse DCED's share of any expenses which are determined to be ineligible by the DCE at project closeout. Now, therefore, the City of Uniontown agrees to supply for funding in the amount of $50,000 from DCED to continue to operate the Gallatin Avenue Elm Street program. And witness where the City of Uniontown has clauses agreement to be duly signed and executed as of the day and year first of operating.
No comment.
No comment.
Gary, no comment.
Mr. Michael?
Yes.
Mr. Palumbo?
Yes.
Mr. Gearing?
Yes.
Mayor Pike?
Yes.
That's all I have there.
Well, I guess we'll adjourn it, right?
Yes. Mayor, I have a couple of things I'd like to address council very quickly.
Yes.
First thing is that late last week, the city was notified that the Pennsylvania Infrastructure Investment Authority, PennVest, had accepted your request...
Don't use the handout.
Had accepted your request for funding for the Redstone Interceptor project. Part of that acceptance is that the solicitor would need to log on to the PennVest website, review the funding offer, and then make...I'm hoping at the next council meeting in December, make a recommendation to council to either accept or deny the funding offer. I would think that the funding offer should be in line. It's a standard offer from PennVest, and at that point, we could finalize acceptance of the funding offer and move forward on that very important project for the Redstone Interceptor that you received the H-200 grant last year from. So I would ask the council authorize the solicitor to review that funding request or offer and make a recommendation at your next council meeting to proceed or not to proceed.
Do you need to have a motion? Or we could have...
I think we only have 30 days, John, and it was approved the 23rd of October. J. W. and I tried to get into the portal last night, and we weren't able to, so we had some issues with that, but...
Yeah, I tried two months before that, actually. So if somebody could provide those terms and conditions in a, you know, non-electronic format, that would be...
I have a password to get in, but we weren't able to locate the area where they gave the funding.
Okay. Well, I'll work with the solicitor and Kim and see if we can get this issue and...
ASAP. I'm sure it's fine. We just haven't been able to access it.
John, we have a special meeting too in November, so we can...he can look at it. We can do what we need to do then.
Oh, that's true. Okay.
Okay, the second issue I have is Chief Cox has it within his budget, a $20,000 line item for improvements to the police station, more or less for public, for the safety of the exits and the facade of the police station. My office, in conjunction with the police chief and his staff, has prepared a plan to expend that $20,000, to remove some glass windows and block them up, and basically improve the safety of the front of the police station for the officers behind those windows that are blocked and darkened. I'd like to have authorization to go to bid with these plans and bring forth to council in December, or receive bids at least at the next council meeting so that we can open them and review them at that time. And I would need a motion for that.
I'll make a motion.
A second?
Joe B.
I'll say.
Now, your motion is to put out a bid?
To solicit bid, yes. Advertise and receive bids prior to the next council meeting.
For the work at the police station?
That's right. Safety improvements at the police station.
How much you got left? 20?
About $20,000.
All right. I thought you was going to use that to give the chief a raise.
Okay. On the motion to solicit, advertise, and receive bids for the safety work improvements to be done at the police station, Mr. Michael?
Yes.
Mr. Palumbo?
Yes.
Mr. Gearing?
Yes.
Mayor Pike?
Yes.
Thank you, Mayor.
Chief.
Tim Collin wants to speak.
Thank you.
Yes, sir.
Chief, you want to speak? Or are you spoken out?
Um, yeah, I'm spoken out. I appreciate the resolution regarding the safety features on the front of the building. It was a line item that was put in the 2012 budget, and I feel fortunate that you guys are allowing me to move forward with the project. From a police department standpoint, we fielded a little over 1,000 calls in the month of October. We, you know, continue to deal with the everyday crimes that, you know, unfortunately infiltrate society and moving forward, doing the best we can, and hope for a...well, we were fortunate with Hurricane Sandy that, from the standpoint of law enforcement, you know, we did have to move forward with some response. The fire department helped us out tremendously. They were on standby at a whim to help us as well. So we were fortunate in that the area wasn't as impacted as greatly as we thought it would be, and we hope for a mild winter.
Very good. Chief?
Mayor, it's always a pleasure to be here. I hope everybody has a positive day after we get done here. As we move forward, I'd like to really stress the fact that a conversation with Mr. Michael about the ambulance corps is something...I did not negotiate any set fees or anything for the ambulance corps. That's going to be something that we'll sit down and discuss in the future. Mr. Michael's willing to come and meet with the executive board for the ambulance corps. The ambulance service has been part of the fire department since 1947. It was actually through a resolution and ordinance by city council back in 1946 that the fire chief be authorized to organize a rescue squad in the ambulance service. So the Uniontown Fireman's Ambulance has been part of the city since 1947, and we're going to continue to be a part of the city. And obviously, in today's financial world, it's something that we need to take a look at.
Sure.
And in the discussion we had, I felt it was maybe the right time to do this, but I certainly didn't offer anything beyond the discussion. So with Mr. Michael, we have a discussion with the executive board, and we'll continue on with that, and hopefully we'll come up with some. Code enforcement, obviously, throughout the country is going back to the fire service with, you know, Homeland Security money. We were very, very fortunate to get the SAFER grant, and hopefully, you know, soon next year, I think we're going to try and apply again.
I hope.
We were the only culminator paid department in the state of Pennsylvania that got SAFER grant money in that last go-around, so we'll continue to do that. The automobile accidents, if that's some way to generate a small amount of money, we're certainly willing to do that. And I, you know, I answer my phone seven days a week. If I don't answer right away, I get back to you within a reasonable amount of time, and it doesn't matter whether it's the mayor, Mr. Gearing, or Mr. Michael. I mean, I try to be upfront with everybody, and I think I work in a professional manner with each and every one of you. The flooding we had, we worked real close, like Jason said. Mr. Michael and I spent some time riding around and observing some of the flooding and taking care of some issues. Commissioner Zabatowski was a bundle of joy to deal with, but we got through it, made him happy, so...and then I offered to...I provided lunch for the police and the fire department, and Mr. Michael came down that day, so...
He ate it all.
He fell in love with my cabbage patch.
You gotta try it.
So it was an enjoyable day for the police and fire to get down and break bread, and we're going to continue to work in the future as much as we can. Obviously, financially, everybody's aware of the problems, and whatever we need to do, we're going to do. So that's all I have.
I just want you to know that we're proud of the work that you and your company does and also Jason. I mean, I think we're second to none. There's still three third-class cities, and I'd put ours up against anyone. So we're proud of you. Don't ever think we're not.
One other, the ISO officer is going to be in town on Friday reviewing our rating through the insurance service office, and hopefully, we're going to be able...we've really been working hard to hopefully upgrade that to a better number. So he's going to be in town on Friday, and Scott Kahn, God love him, you know, he can quote the fire code and the building code for Bayton, so he's really on top of everything we need to do to meet with this gentleman on Friday.
All right, thank you. Jimmy?
Yeah, I'd just like to take this time to thank council, and you may have allowed me to speak on behalf of...Mayor State Representative Tim Mahoney will be hosting a hurricane relief drive to benefit those who have been affected by Hurricane Sandy. Our goal is to fill a tractor trailer of needed items that will be delivered to a district distribution center in New Jersey. For any questions, they can contact our office at 724-438-6100. What we plan on doing, we're doing is to have a tractor trailer parked up at the Uniontown Mall. That'll be Friday, November the 16th, from 12 to 6; Saturday, November 17th, from 9 to 6; and Sunday, November the 18th, from 12 to 6. And we're hoping to fill this tractor trailer. Mr. Blaney is going to donate his trailer. Mike Behakovic is going to donate his truck to pull the trailer and get the goods up to New Jersey. We're in contact with the governor's office, or our office contacted the governor's office in New Jersey. We have a contact person that we will be contacting when we're ready to go. They will tell us where to make the delivery at. We will be working hand in hand with them. Some of the items that they would be needing will be non-perishable food, they need cleaning material, they need coats, boots, garbage bags, anything that for like cleanup, things like that. I have a list. I will let every...I'm going to get one to every municipality, every borough, every township, you know, to see if they would be a drop-off center for some of the elderly that cannot make it to the mall. I'm asking council and the mayor if we could do a city hall for a drop-off center for some of the residents. I know we have a few of the high-rises here in town. They may not be able to make it up to the mall, but maybe they could walk down or send somebody to drop some things off. Preferably for the blankets and boots and gloves and outfits, it could be some new things, or, you know, we're not looking for someone else's, you know, materials that we'd have to get rid of, but we're trying to send it up to help these needy people and get things in line to help them out. Again, we'll also be looking for volunteers to help man the trailer up there from 12 to 6. for a drop-off center for some of the residents. I know we have a few of the high-rises here in town. They may not be able to make it up to the mall, but maybe they could walk down or send somebody to drop some things off. Uh, preferably for the blankets and boots and gloves and all. If it could be some new things, or, you know, we're not looking for someone else's, you know, materials that we'd have to get rid of. But we're trying to send it up to help these needy people and get things in line to, uh, to help them out. Uh, again, we'll also be looking for volunteers to help man the, uh, the trailer up there from twelve to six on, uh, Friday. Again, Saturday from nine to six, and Sunday from twelve to six. We will be leaving Monday morning with the products that we gathered to take up to New Jersey. Uh, we're, you know, like I said, about three feet, but we are in contact with the governor of, uh, New Jersey, and it's not just something that we're just going to pick up and just drop off somewhere. He's going to let us know exactly where these things are badly needed. Uh, as you may be aware, if you're not, uh, he just let us know today that they are, uh, having a storm again, hitting them within this afternoon and tonight, tomorrow, and possibly the next day. New Jersey's getting wet snow, heavy wet snow right now. Uh, New York's getting wa, floods and high winds. So, there's, it's just compounding the, the problem that's already there. So, we're asking everyone in Fayette County, we're pleading with you to please come up to the mall, bring, bring the items up. If it's only one, two, three cans of, uh, food, or some, like, cleaning materials, or whatever, toothbrush, toothpaste, deodorant, things that, that they can... Remember, these people have no way to get to the store because there are no stores in some of their areas. They have no way to get to other areas because one of the women, she said she lost her car. She can't, they're, they're locked in. They just have no way to travel, they can't move.
Mr. Colman, are you looking for financial donations?
Financially, if...
Where do we, where do we send others?
We're going to, uh, ask the, uh... Who do we want to give us to?
WMBS.
That, we're going to talk to WMBS
to pull, you know, some...
To see if, uh, they would be willing to accept the donations because we're not allowed to do that through the stellar office. But if WMBS would be kind enough to allow them to make the checks and add out to WMBS, and we can forward...
I'll take them.
We'll forward them up to, uh, up to, uh, New Jersey and, uh...
That's also for fuel money.
Also, yeah, it'll help towards fuel or whatever other money we have left we'll go towards so they can purchase things up, like the other things they need. So, we're asking everyone, we're asking all the, the whole community in Fayette County. And the, the trailer that they're going to be taking it up in, it says Fayette County, uh, on the trailers. One of Mr. Blaney's, uh, trailers that he's donating to us. So, we're pleading with you, we're asking, uh, everyone to please, you know, open your hearts up. I know this area, we've been pretty fortunate. Jason said that there was a couple basements or a couple streets and they've been flooded. We'll compound that, compound that over hundreds of what they had up in New Jer, New Jersey. And you, you know what you're going to do. So, if, uh, if we can, if we may, it's okay to say that this could be a drop-off spot for the residents of the city, right here in the city, to drop off in the, uh, in the, uh, municipal, the building here, uh, city council area. You know, you can bring your product here if you can make it to the mall, and we will make arrangements to get it from here up to the truck before it leaves on Monday, the nineteenth. Okay?
Yes, sir.
Thank you so much.
Thank you.
This is the flyer, I'll leave this written to you. Kim, if you want to print it, so...
Thank you.
And I will get you a list of all the, uh, items that's needed. I'll, I'll have that down to you tomorrow morning. And we're, we're going to get this in the paper. And we're going to also get, try to get the schools involved with it also. If you have the kids, maybe they can bring some goods to the school and have the, we can have them picked up and, uh...
Maybe some of the churches could help too.
Some of the churches, whoever, whoever can open up their hearts up to these people.
Right.
Help out, that's what we're looking for. And thanks to Reverend Mahoney for taking the, in charge of this to... We needed someone to be out in front to, to get it going, to get it organized. Uh, you know, he thought it was a great idea, so, uh, he's on board with it. So, please, this, this has nothing to do with politics or anything like that.
Right.
This is for the government of, of fellow citizens that are in dire need of, uh, help and, uh, whatever we can do to help them.
Hopefully, if we ever need somebody, help us.
Well, that's what we're, you never know. You know, you never know when it may fall back this way.
Believe me.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you. Anybody else got anything they want to add?
Mayor, I've spoken the pen on today, and hopefully, uh, they're, they're setting up the pay, finish paving Morgantown Street tomorrow night up to the intersection of Fayette, and then early next week, finish the intersection. So, it should be done before winter.
Getting better.
Yep, they've extended the paving season till the thirteenth for the project, so...
Good, good.
That should complete that one.
Yep. Mayor, thanks for passing those, uh, resolutions for the funding for Main Street as well as Main Street, um, the application process. Also, um, I thought the, uh, Halloween parade was very successful. Main Street had a part in that. We partnered up with the Chamber on that. Saw some of you guys in the parade, so I appreciate you guys doing that. Also, uh, Home for the Holidays, uh, that's our Uniontown version of Light at Night. We probably use Light at Night. But, uh, we're having Home for the Holidays December sixth. That's a Thursday. Parade starts at five-thirty. If any of you guys want to be in the parade, just want to extend the invitation out there for you. So, that's it.
Okay. Uh, before we close, I'd like to recommend, or maybe even vote on, uh, giving Mark a little extra money for tonight uh, to pay for the additional time you've been here. I know you can't work for nothing either.
It's not necessary, Mayor. I do it for the love of my city.
All right, we love you too.
He'll make me buy them.
Mayor, can I have, uh, say one thing? I'd like to thank you for, uh, uh, pulling up to, uh, open avenue and, uh, trying to handle that problem. I think you did it the right way, given it to the engineer to do the study for the whole neighborhood. Because people don't realize that's one of the last neighborhoods that isn't really a rental neighborhood. And you have young families up there, young business people that work and support this city through their taxes. And, um, I just appreciate what you've did tonight, and I think it's going to go a long way. And I think your engineer will come up with a solution that everyone can live with in that neighborhood.
Can I add to that, Mayor? I just, Mr. Mahoney, we just want to thank you. Ever, almost every meeting, one of your staff is here. You are here, I mean, I think we have an excellent partnership with our state representative and, uh, uh, you know, our doors are always open to your office, and not the other way around. But, um, I think that, you know, we work well together. And, uh, let's keep doing that.
I echo that.
I probably have one of the best staffs in the, uh...
You absolutely do.
I mean, we, we get involved with a lot of community, uh, activities just like what we're doing with New Jersey. They go upon themselves, it's their idea, uh, to do this. And, uh, they, they called the governor's office, uh, in New Jersey themselves. And those people are in dire need. Somerset County donated a fire engine last week to New Jersey because one fire department, they lost all their engines. So, it's about helping people and working together and trying to get things moving in the right direction in Fayette County. And I think...
It's all about people helping people.
Yeah, and I think, uh, we're going in the right direction. You know, I just definitely represent the city well. We appreciate it. Thanks.
I might add, uh, your office, when I was going cold in front of Park, got me fifty thousand dollars to buy those kids, the toys that were inside that fence over there. And that's something you don't forget. When you help the elderly and when you help the very young, God will surely bless you. Anyone else?
I'm glad to see you get the Rotary Walk property transfer too because that, that's a big addition to the city for Rotary to go to fifty-one. But I walk at, uh, tracks at nighttime, and it's fifty-eight I take. Thank you.
All right. Are we...
Yes, Mayor, I have a couple questions. Uh, do we have a status on the two thousand eleven audit?
It's nearly complete for the city. They've been working on the, uh, audit for the redevelopment authority because we have to have a single audit done this year. Um, I understand that's getting close to being completed, what?
Yes, they, they have a few outstanding items for the auditor that they're working on now.
One more thing. When I told you about Mark, I'm going to turn some time in for me for this meeting tonight, too.
And, uh, are we going to, uh, schedule a, a work session if we have some budget issues that we need to go over?
Schedule a work session, you didn't tell me.
Well, yes, no...
No, several weeks ago you were...
Comprehensive, comprehensive citywide budget review work session.
We, we discussed the budget with each department head. Shelby, do you, do you think you need a work session for your department?
No, I spoke with Kim about things that need...
Blair said he didn't. Mayor, do you need a work session for your department?
Not at all.
I scheduled a work session for you.
I mind your budget, mind you.
You're good. I scheduled a work session for your department, you didn't come.
You never followed me with Mark.
Mayor?
I did so.
Sure.
No, you never did.
I did.
A adjourned?
Let's go.
It was all by city council in the city of Uniontown. The council adjourns to meet Wednesday, December fifth, two thousand twelve, at four-thirty P.M. Mr. Michael?
Yes.
Mr. Palomba?
Absolutely.
Mr. Gearing?
Uh, I'm sorry, what was the date for that?
December fifth is our next regular scheduled meeting.
Okay. Nothing on the budget between now and then?
Mayor Plake?
Yes.